So, I mean, that's a good idea. We can, we can leave this numbers as they are and then just turn the display on and see if there's any, any additional complaints.
Let's do that.
And maybe keep it there for a while if it works, you know?
Yep.
But getting back to the question.
It's hard pressed to do thirty through there. I mean, I could tell you, and Dom can tell you the same thing. Even when we're going to something hot, if we're, if we're pushing twenty through the center of the village, you're lucky.
You're, you gotta, you must not worry about everybody stepping up between vehicles or.
Absolutely, yeah.
Car doors. Incoming traffic is coming, you know, and our biggest problem is Gerald says, you guys like to start about people. They don't care.
Is that right?
They all run out of money.
But.
Right, that's the question.
That's a, that's a good idea, so we'll do that.
Okay.
Do we, I think I know the answer to this, but do we have any sense of when DOT might respond?
They promised me the spring, but you know how that is.
Next year.
That gives them, that gives them for June at least.
When they said it was next year, it was last year when they promised me. And I talked to them early this year, and that's all they're gonna give me is a reconfirmation of, yeah, sometime in the spring. All right. I'll let you know soon I find out. My next thing is the, um, Lexi Paul. So, um, also, Rick, trustee Cantino myself have been working with Lexi Paul on a weekly basis to go through chapter by chapter, their proposed policies of duty. And so I've sent out to the board trustees, um, firstly, check the three hundred, the use of force, which the board that are clean require me, and I sent emails to the trustees, both at the end of December and the end of March, which is a list of all thirty of the chapters that are part of the court, the tier one requirements. So, the, uh, the group has reviewed all thirty of the tier one processes. My question to the board is, I'd like to get the board's approval for us to release these to the police for them to go through page by page and acknowledge received. Any questions for the trustees about this? Are you okay with, uh, going for the approval of these? All right, so I get a motion to approve these thirty chapters for tier one. Do you hear a second? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay, thank you. So now inform Lexi Paul to release these to the police, and they gotta go through chapter by chapter and acknowledge they've received.
I re, I released the last one, so we'll, we'll work with them.
I'm sorry?
I released the use of force one. I'm the one who issued it, so.
Oh, you're the one who issued it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. That's even better.
Yeah.
All right, and just want you to know, um, we've now finished eleven chapters in tier two, the team, the team has. We're not ready to release those yet, but we're gonna group those together with all the other two tier twos. But this is gonna give the office, we have things to chew on for the next few months. Okay, any more questions about that? And let's move on. Bob?
Okay, snow ordinance ended March thirty first, brush pickup began April first. So people can park on the streets again. We're having the streets swept, uh, tomorrow. And, uh, again, later on in the spring or early summer. Uh, we had a couple trees come down due to the storms, and they were removed. And everything is, else is the, uh, normal day to day.
All right, before we talk about Washington Avenue, any questions for Bob's board? Okay, so Bob, let's talk about, uh, Washington Avenue.
Well, we wanna get it paved this year, um, milled and paved. But before we can do that, we have, um, some infrastructure that needs to be handled, and that being collapsed, storm drain pipes. But before we do that, we need to get a company out to camera it. Uh, so Scott will get me a name of a company to camera it, make sure exactly how much we need to have done.
The idea is instead of replacing the entire storm drain, we can salvage just to a partial replacement?
Yeah, because the, the cost is quite high to do that work. There also might be a couple of catch basins that need to be replaced with it. If we're gonna do it, might as well do it the right way. The biggest problem we have is a time constraint, getting all this done and then getting into the paper for bids. Uh, because once that's done, it needs to settle for probably two months. We wanna do it the right way, yeah, that's, that's what the paving company will.
Is that right?
Will want. So to do it the right way, it should be about two months. But we can put the, the paving off until September.
Excuse me, I haven't done much long.
Yeah, so, um, we also have one other complication. We have the, the, a water line and storm drain too. They wanna tie into the storm drains from the house.
From Lee Wood's place.
From the, yeah, the house that's right up there and being built. He wants a tie-in, so that's also gonna be cutting through the road, and that has to be done before.
And Scott, you're gonna replace the, uh, shut-off valves along there?
Yeah, we got, yeah, on the street.
How many did you do?
I think just six.
Six, okay. So we got the shut-off valves, we've got the tappen of, uh, Lee Woods where both the storm drain, as well as the water.
Water.
The sewers on, on the south side, right? There's a sewer.
Sewers.
That's right.
The tappen, the tappen and the sewer, does it need to go into the street?
Uh, well, that's not the plan, but 'cause right now they're gonna tie into the line that goes into, uh, off the garage.
Okay, so they won't go into Washington Avenue?
Well, that's not the plan, but I had not heard anything from him on what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I don't think that's changing.
All right, fine. And then the storm drain, so they're gonna get them before we pay. And you got the price from Beckham for the paid?
Uh, have not gotten it yet. Apparently he's not around, so trying it dry every day.
All right, so Steph, what are you gonna get someone here and camera the storm drain? And determine what's the level of, prepare this to the required.
Right.
Okay.
This way we don't have to waste the money.
Right. Okay, so something like Bob, like Thomas and the essence, right, to take this sculpting aside?
And I will get the, uh, I'll get, get them to give me a price on the, uh, backup streets if this one can't be finished.
Sure, that would be Weathersford and, um.
Highland.
And what?
Highland. Hillside, I'm sorry.
Hillside, yeah, I think hillside, right, okay. I would really like to get Washington Avenue's done because it's high volume.
I'd rather, yeah, that's the one that should be done.
Even to the point where if the cost gets excessive, we should defer all install of NAB. That's what I'm thinking. But we, we can get the information from, I think that's, doing the street is more important. And so we gotta make sure we got, you know, everything here and get this one done. All right?
Okay.
Any questions for Bob about this? Okay, let's move on. Okay, Scott?
All right, uh, the water, uh, all maintenance and sampling was performed. Uh, replaced, uh, seven, uh, water meter registers, uh, replaced one water meter and fixed another non-reading one. And we have red hall water meters and the bills are out. And we also had a water service line hit during excavation on Franklin Avenue, which was repaired by the owner.
New bill?
New restaurant.
Now, what was it that, uh, the board said you're also emailing bills?
They, they are, yeah.
And how do you get on the email list, you know?
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay, fine. I'll find out. I, I got mine through the mail. I'll have to find out what it takes to get an email, please, all right? Okay, when I find out, we'll put those on the list. What's this, what's this, last one, water service line hit during excavation, what was that?
They hit the water service line when they were working on the new restaurant.
Oh, is that right?
The back, is it the back?
Oh, okay. You're working on a new, uh, project. All right, good, any more questions about that? Okay, let's talk the sewer.
All right, uh, all maintenance and sampling was performed. I had the fire extinguisher serviced. Uh, there was a sewer backup on the lateral on Trendy Lane. Uh, we had that flushed and the restriction is clear. Uh, sewer lateral repair at thirty-nine merit. Uh, we met with the DEC regarding the C P permit. And we've also met with both engineering firms regarding the sewer treatment plant upgrade.
Okay. And you're gonna do your own research on the, uh, some of the elements of the proposal from Time Bond? So you bring that information to the meeting?
Yep.
Okay, good. Questions for Scott regarding sewer? All right, thanks. Okay, Sarah?
All right, so, uh, building department, we had eight issued, uh, building permits. Um, and then, uh, two certificate of compliances and one missed research. Um, the total fees we collected was five thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. Uh, that is a lot, but that was the restaurant, like, they had a, they had a big building permit, so that's the only reason why that's there. Um, and then I just made a note that June first will have those, the S T Rs will be starting to take those.
So right now you're working on the HIGGO application?
Yeah, that's just about complete. I think we're just missing a couple of those affidavits.
Okay, I thought Ken said he sent the word document to you with the four documents?
I got one. I, I replied and I said, what about like the other three that I didn't get a reply back? So I did, I did mention that to him yesterday though, when I saw him.
Okay.
And I know, um, I don't have any notes here, 'cause this is March, but the upcoming month's planning board seems to be, um, gonna start getting some more affidavits and
Yeah.
Kinda busy, a couple site plan reviews and
Okay.
What have you, so.
Yeah, I've seen numerous
Yeah.
Emails today.
Yeah, it was just like the past, like, two weeks, just on, I had a poo-poo.
Okay, good. All right, bank balances?
And yes, I, these are the bank balances of March. Um, I did, I did move that, uh, the reserve money for the, uh, fire department, the seventy-five thousand. I moved that into near class.
Good.
And the tennis court reserve. So I started those lines in the, um, at near class.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Any questions about the bank balances? So let's not just have a meeting with Milbrook Restoration Group, and, um, the plan is that they're gonna spend all the remaining funds they have on a request from a, uh, business owner to do a fixture to their facade, first facade. Which basically will put that to zero.
Yeah.
And the agreement was that we would basically leave it at zero, leave the count there in case anyone in the future comes forward with money, but right now, that has been funded in the past by Tree Garden. They do not intend to fund anymore. While they're busy working on the parking of the door door.
That makes sense.
All right. Okay.
And then, um, I spent a lot of time pretty much just working on budget. That was, that was most of my month, um, and then my standard bank recs. I did try to submit the second, um, reimbursement for DASNE, but they won't accept it until the pump station is at its final location. So I have to wait for that and then I could resubmit, but that's about one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar bill.
Okay, fine. So Scott just saw where the Department of Health did approve their, the plans, so they're starting to get the thing moving together, I think. I got calls from both, um, Robert Flores and, and Jake Felber. They're gonna get a meeting together with all the parties and get this project moving, so that's good news. Yeah. Okay, good.
And just, just 'cause I, I'll put this, um, in the records, uh, we, I did, um, do the oath of office for Peter Devon for, um, for the, uh, village to surround.
Okay, good.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Sarah? You had five, four requests as well? Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I don't know about that, fine. Okay, so next is the resolution proposal to pay back to the Thorn Trust the funds that we've been given as part of the maintenance of the building back when we owned the property. And I sent an email out to those trustees about a month ago, identified what we plan to do. And, um, Bob's here for Ian, the, uh, yeah, the wording here. Do you wanna describe the situation?
Yes, we have, we have a proposed resolution on this. Basically, the, the village is holding, um, uh, funds in a, in its, uh, Thorn Trust account, I gather, uh, which, which were for, um, maintenance of the Thorn building. Now that the village no longer owns the building, uh, these funds are, are, um, unused and, uh, were, uh, initially contributed, as I understand it, to the village for that purpose. So the, uh, request is to, and the resolution is to provide for the, uh, funds to be turned over to, uh, Milbrook Community Partnership, uh, which, um, uh, now has taken over support of the maintenance of the, uh, of the building. So the funds would be used for the original purpose that they were intended for.
Yeah, back when the village still owned the building, we used that for maintenance or repair, uh, when things were damaged or whatever, with various reasons why we were using those funds. We haven't used them since we turned the, uh, property over to the N C P. So the, the proposal is to return those funds back over to that group. And actually to a, an account that's called the Repair Fund, Extraordinary Repair Fund. Specifically, that's what it's called.
Yes, yeah, so we, we prepared a resolution, uh, to, uh, for the board to authorize that.
So there's one, any questions or comments about that?
Who initiated this request?
Um, George Wayland. Yep. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, then, Bob, can you walk us through the, uh, the resolution?
All right, shall I just read it?
Um, I don't think you need to read it, but I'll see.
Um, well, it.
I guess I could say I, I introduced the resolution, and I need to move to second.
Second.
Okay, make a second. And there's the details in terms of how much is in the account as of today.
Original purpose.
Purposes why?
Uh, the, um, it's the purpose, uh, of the, of the trust was to hold these funds that were, uh, distributed for this purpose. Uh, and, uh, the funds were required to be used to maintain the Thorn building. Uh, recites the transfer of the Thorn, Thorn building, uh, to the, um, Thorn, Thorn Memorial Building LLC, which occurred in twenty twenty-one. And, um, and so now the funds, uh, are to be transferred, uh, to Milbrook Community Partnership, Inc., um, uh, for the, for that restricted purpose of maintaining the cost of, of, uh, supporting the cost of maintaining the Thorn building. So, um, really, it's a resolution that the, that the village, uh, board determines it's no longer has the ability to use the funds in the account for the original purpose because you no longer own the Thorn building, and, uh, that the funds be transferred, uh, to the.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Sarah, do you have your vote?
Eric Hallikey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Doral?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say that I hope the V F W continues to have access to that building, uh, for quite some time, because if they were to lose access to that, that would be a, a real loss.
No, I agree.
So I hope this LLC does not do that.
And I think they'd have the negotiation discussions about that, and what I've heard from George Wayland is that they are allowing him, and obey, hereby your basis, to continue that. And there's no debate described, which is not what, what we have to be asked for, but
Right.
It's continuing as it is from time to time. Okay. Let's move on. Uh, all business, so, Trustee Herzog, you have his update on the sidewalk.
Okay, um, we, we were hoping, I'm not saying we, I mean, the village, just hoping to be able to wrap up getting the last of the work done on the sidewalk by having the ramps completed. Uh, we were in contact with Altice, which has a box in the ramp itself that we deemed we probably should be repaired or at least looked at because the lid was not secured to our liking. Uh, they came out, inspected it, and said, oh, yes, we'll show up whenever you guys wanna do the ramp. They put in a work order, and apparently, when, when Sunup wanted to come out to do the ramp, wanted, wanted, wanted confirmation that Altice would be there the same day to move the box. They said the work order had not been processed in time, they would have to wait. So after a number of phone calls in the last week and a half, we found out that, uh, the DOT has put a stop order on Altice and did all work, uh, in the area, not just this one project, so that there was no real, no real, uh, solution in sight for having the ramp redone and having the box repaired at the same time. So, um, Tim, uh, the mayor had decided and, you know, called me and he said, I think we're just gonna have Sunup come up and do the ramp at this point, and we've been, uh, withdraw our request for, from Altice to be able to replace the box.
The DOT is okay with that?
And, uh, the DOT apparently is okay with that. So we're now scheduled for next Wednesday, as I know it, to be able to have Sunup come back and redo the ramp, uh, and do the ramp and as be the last one of the project would have to be completed. Once the, uh, once the ramp is done, we're on schedule, uh, once we get the trees in to basically be able to wrap up the, wrap up the project completely. And since in the beginning of the project, when we outlined things that had to be done, the contractor specifically said, I want nothing to do with the trees, and I don't want it as part of the project. So officially, when the ramp gets done, we should get our last, uh, funding from the county, which would be the ten percent they're withholding until the project is considered.
Forty thousand dollars, or?
Yeah, it's considered complete. So next Wednesday hopefully will be the day when it all gets done. And there are plans in the works right now to have, uh, the five trees that we said we would install, uh, hint on Franklin Avenue to replace the ones that were taken out, uh, planted. And, uh, I'm just, just quick background on that. I've gotten bids from, from, um, different landscapers, uh, Adams, Direct Root, Deep Roots, Direct, Perfect Landscaping, and Milbrook Gardens to handle either the entire project of supplying the trees and the planting, or to just separate it, and some just putting in for supplying the trees and some, uh, as planting fee, what they would do for, uh, planting them. And so I have some bids, and we can, um, entertain that tonight so that we can hopefully award the bids to the proper entities and get that done. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that Deep Roots Direct, which put in, uh, put in at the lowest bid for supplying the trees, be awarded the ability to give us the trees we need for the project. And, uh, I need a second to that motion, and we'll entertain any questions about figures if you want me to.
So you're talking about buying, buying the trees right now, not the installation?
We're talking buying the trees, and, uh, I did wanna discuss the installation part of it because as of mid-afternoon, I didn't have a figure from the last person who, the last group that was bidding on planting, but I got that this afternoon, so we can talk about that too.
So what's the total cost? Trees plus, um, install?
Yeah, install. Well, basically, uh, trees install. Deep Root Direct is going to give us the, uh, they're gonna give us the trees for seventeen hundred and sixty dollars for the five trees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's why I, they came in lowest in terms of the cost of providing the trees. Now, in terms of planting, we have two bids. We have one from Perfect Landscaping for four, four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for just the planting and materials to plant, and a bid for forty-eight seventy-nine for planting materials for Milbrook Gardens. So those, we have to decide which group we want to have actually planted.
What was the first one, forty-three sixty?
Forty-three sixty for Perfect Landscaping and forty-eight seventy-nine from Milbrook Gardens. Now, the only caveat I wanna throw in here, just to make sure we know the background. Perfect Landscaping gave us that bid and said that they wouldn't be able to plant because of their busy schedule until probably the beginning of June. I was hoping to have these trees planted in mid-May, to where we were late May. So I have not been able to get in touch with, uh, anyone from Plant Milbrook Gardens, uh, currently because I only got this quote like four o'clock this afternoon. But one of the considerations we have to have for who's gonna install is making sure that, making sure when it gets done. Now, both of these firms are local, they both have very, very good, strong reputations, so I, it's not a matter of, you know, for either of those being a consideration. The consideration for me now is, even though it's a five hundred dollar difference in cost, is who's gonna be able to plant in a time when I think is that feasible? These are gonna be our showcase trees.
Right.
There's been so much controversy about, the last thing I want is having them planted late into the summer and then have the trees fail because they were planted too late.
So, so the trees themselves, we had three quotes, right?
Yeah.
The seventeen sixties, the most of the three quotes?
Yes.
Okay, did you have three quotes for the planting?
Uh, no, two quotes because the Direct Roots, the Deep Roots Direct did not wanna bid on planting.
I see, okay, fine, okay.
Yeah, questions in?
I do, yeah, I do have a question. Do, does Director, any of the others guarantee the trees or warrant the trees for any amount of time? And does that change if someone else plants them?
Uh, as far as I, as far as I know, uh, when they, when they, in the past, when we've had trees that have been, been done, it hasn't been affected by who plants them in terms of negating the guarantee. The trees are generally, can most firms go by this, a year's guarantee from the time they're put in the ground. Okay, so in the course of, every year, it's, uh,
Right. It's, it's. No, I'm just wondering, like, if, well, I don't know, if you're concerned about June for aesthetic reasons or because it's hotter?
It's hotter, that's my.
Yeah, and
Yeah, the average temperature.
You have problems, but we're protected, you're saying?
Yeah. Where, where, our average, our average temperature in June is about eighty degrees. Uh, Patrick may have a better idea of what the average temperature in May is in terms of lighting and that nature, but it's, you know, the right, the ground right now is very saturated, so to have ample water would be easy to plant. But we don't get a lot of water in the next month and a half by the time June goes around, if that's when they plant. That could be an issue. I prefer not have to deal with that at all, so.
Let's stay with Vicki's point. If you have a different company planting the trees than who you'd want from, who's warranting the trees?
People providing the funds.
So the people who, who, the trees warrant?
Yes. And the person, and the, and the people doing it, Deep Roots Direct, have been supplying trees to the village for more than a decade.
Okay.
And we have not had, we have not had one tree that had to be removed due to, uh, bidding.
Yeah, 'cause I would do this once.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. All right, so basically the, the total you're talking about is sixty-six hundred and thirty-nine dollars for Deep Roots Direct and Milbrook Gardens versus sixty-one twenty for Deep Roots Direct and Performance Landscaping? All right?
There is ample amount we have in the, uh, in the fund we have for this right now, uh, for planting these. We have seventy-six hundred dollars.
Right.
So we, we have the fund without dipping into any.
When can Milbrook Gardens commit to planting the trees?
I don't know, I haven't, we haven't had that conversation, okay? Kevin, um, Grayne on the Jay Tree Committee contacted me this afternoon, and this is all the information I have.
All right.
So I have to, you know, discuss that further with, uh, Representative Milbrook Gardens.
I would like the board to approve now that you go forward to get these trees bought.
No, go ahead.
Right, so we look at the trees before we get them, like, do we choose the trees or do we choose the trees?
They choose the trees.
Okay, so we don't know until they're on site?
Right, but basically I've, I've spoken to them. Right. But basically, I've spoken to them, who we've worked with, I've had that for more than a decade, and said, we want the biggest trees that you can get of the variety we ask for that will fit in space. And he's walked, he's walked the street and looked at the spaces. So I don't think we have to worry about getting a tree that's so big it's not gonna, the wall's not gonna fit in the pit or something of that nature. You should, you should be fine.
What about taking care of, like initially? Obviously, we'll take care of all the time that I'll be watering them.
Basically, no watering. Okay, there is no agreement that it's been arranged. I don't think, yeah. I mean, like with both, with both of these organizations, Perfect Landscaping and Millbrook Gardens, I'm sure that if we said we want to go into an agreement where you water the trees over a period of time, they'll do that. They'll just be in it, basically is what it is. I don't know how much, but it's usually not unreasonable. A few hundred dollars a month or whatever. That could be, that could be a possibility of adding that to the.
But Bob, can we ask you guys to do the watering of the trees?
Yeah, sure.
Why don't we do that? And the other question I want to know is are there, I've seen before these, what are called boots, they put along the trunk that hold water? Is that something we could be going after too? Does that help or not?
What's that?
I've seen those things, they're like, I'm calling boots, they're going on the side of the truck, they hold water.
I've never used them, yeah.
Okay. Are they worthwhile?
Yeah, last lines.
I don't know. Okay. Can we check into that and see if that's something that would be of benefit to us?
Because otherwise, what would the water supply be?
Blockhead.
Fire hose.
Oh, yeah, okay. You have to bring it from somewhere.
Yes.
Yeah, when they, I've, I've seen when they water the trees, they have a pickup truck in the back and pick up stuff. I don't know what the gallons, they have a huge tank in the back and they would go around and they would just, like the fire hogs type thing, just water from there. That's how it's done. There are landscapers who have, who will put bags around the trees and use.
Bags, right, okay.
Yeah, slow release method.
Yeah.
So it depends.
Let's check it out, see if that's available.
Sure.
If they recommend it or not. Okay.
That's fine. So I think as long as we, I just, I just wanted to make sure I brought it up tonight and I was pushing the people getting the quotes for us because I don't want to have to wait until May to award the bid and wait another whole month to be told, well, it's May, we can't service you till July.
I do want you to get a date from Millbrook Gardens, when they can put them in.
Okay.
All right. But based on this, I'd like to go forward with the estimate being $6,639. Any problem with that? Are you gonna motion to accept the bid at $6,639 total?
Seven.
In a second?
I'll second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Good, Mike. Okay, next topic is Trustee Murphy. Give us an update on the sidewalk connection.
Yeah, I also got three proposals. One from Mark Shaw, one from Skylar Woods, and then Bob Simoncelli. And the Bob Simoncelli at the lowest price at $8,245 for connecting Maple to Franklin, the sidewalks. And that's not adding topsoil to the edges. So after the sidewalk's done, maybe the, like, either Village Guys or we can have to put topsoil to the, like, right to the edges.
Yeah, I like that.
Or not anyway.
Bob, you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Either that or stone. Mike, what could?
I, I was gonna say, that area is a natural drainage area, so.
Catch basins right there.
Catch basins right there. You're gonna have to have a certain amount of, of peystone gravel, something to be able to allow for the water to seep down, or else they're gonna wash right out over a period of time.
What, what was the cost you got to bid? How far off were they?
Um, I got, Mark Shaw was $13,900 and Skylar Woods was $14,160.
Jesus, okay.
And the last one was?
And Bob Simoncelli is $8,145.
And that's, tell us, tell us a project, what's, you're gonna take off that first panel, the last panel?
Yeah, they're gonna pop off the last panel and they gotta create a curve to it and they're gonna split between two catch basins, which is kind of nice out there, there actually, because then the water can shed either way.
Okay.
On either side of the sidewalk, they're gonna put an item four base down, about 68 inches thick item four and then like a 4,000 PSI concrete.
Okay.
Down and, and they're gonna split the trees, split the catch basins and kind of pull away towards the left, towards one tree and pull out a stump of a bush and a couple bushes so that we're not affecting the roots, the root ball or having the slab crack.
Yeah, there's a great big tree just on the right, there's a, you go off.
Exactly. Yeah, so hugging the left side will allow for a little more growth out of that tree without affecting the sidewalk.
So you'll have to take it that one bush?
Yep.
Or more?
One, probably the one and then the one that you already asked, which is probably, it's broken.
That's broken. Actually, I think it's rotted.
Yeah, it's just split there. It's a big pile.
Okay. And this is funds we're gonna use from the Tree Garden we've got. So this isn't a budget. This is from the Tree Garden donation they gave us the last year.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
And $8,450 is just $8,500 we have left over from the $10,000 we had. We spent $5,000 on something else. This is up, up available. So basically, could it match?
Yeah, that's great.
So any problem with us proceeding?
If you guys are all okay, then.
Yes.
So if I make a motion to accept this bid?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept Bob Simoncelli's bid at $8,145.
Second, second. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Go forward. Good job. All right, the next is an update regarding trying to recover funds from Greenbrier. So Bob, you gonna take us through that?
Sure. So we have reached out to the current owner of the, of the property on this, on this claim. This is a claim for back sewer charges, going back a couple of years, I gather. The, the, we basically have not received a response from the current owner. They apparently, based on current communications with them, previous communications with them, they, they haven't really disputed the charges. But they don't have any funds and the property's on the sa, on, on the market.
You said Bobby is on the market?
I'm, I, I understand that, that they were trying to sell it.
Okay.
I don't know if they have it listed, but, or what they're doing on that. If you, if you want to consider litigation or anything on this, we could discuss, if you wish, we could discuss.
Well, that may be an executive session, right? Basically, what Ian told me is that you're trying to get the lawyer to come forward with something and they're not responding.
We, you know, we, our, our, our request is that they sign a confession of judgment,
Yeah.
which we could put on record. It would, it could be, and it would be payable when the property is sold. And basically would, you know, acknowledge, acknowledge the claim and, and we'd have assurance that it would be paid.
If it was sold?
If it, if and when the property is sold.
The second option was to commence court action?
Uh, that's, that's a, that's a possibility. I mean, we, the problem is we're being, we're being put off and we're not getting any response.
Okay. And the third option Ian said was that we turn it over to a collection agency?
Yes, you could, you could, you could do that. They, they may want some funds to cover some court costs and damages.
Yeah, okay. He said about a third of the cost.
And they would, and they'd take a probably percentage of, of the recovery.
Right. So how do we know what the board thinks about this? My preference, I guess, is to put a lien on property in the event that it's sold. Is that gonna be a lien?
Well.
What would be?
If, if we recover a judgment, then a judgment would be a lien against the real estate. A confession of judgment would, would do the, would serve the same purpose. The, and a confession of judgment could be done, you know, very, very easily. The, and, you know, it's not me if you want to go into, when you, if you want to defer this to an executive session.
Probably so. I guess, I'd like to get first feeling from especially your lawyers on, on the board, what you guys think about this?
I think we should discuss it in the executive session.
Executive session, okay, fine.
It's not a public, we can discuss.
Yeah, okay, because it gets into that point where we should have an executive session. Okay, we'll defer that then for a later discussion.
I would think so.
Okay, thanks. And the other thing is the Orchard Clean Wash, Washout.
Right. So we, we've been trying to reach out to the affected owners. We, there, there are actually five parcels that utilize Old Orchard Road. Initially, we've been talking about three parcels. We've been in, my firm's been in touch with Amel Panchini's attorney. Mr. Panchini, I believe, owns, owns the property that, where the road is actually located within. It's a flag lot with, with the road going through the flagpole of the lot and other lots adjoining or also served by the road. There's a quote that the town, that the village has received from Ray Seftick to do, to, to repair the situation so that this washout wouldn't recur in the future. The, the quote is for $22,000 of work. It involves installation of three catch basins along one side of the common portion of the roadway. Installing a 15-inch HDPE covert pipe between catch basins and install a swale on the side of the roadway and then to top the driveway with some item four. The, Mr. Panchini is, is willing to go in with the other owners and would be willing to cover a fifth of the, of the cost. And we've recommended that they, that they have a, that they get together and have a road maintenance agreement where they would all agree to share the costs and maintain it over the future. But this really, this really, I think, is the responsibility of the property owners enough and not the village.
Okay, so you guys are gonna get a meeting with Neil's lawyer and the property owners, right?
We're, we're gonna send a letter to the other property owners and advise them that Mr. Panchini's willing and see if we can get them to reach an agreement.
And if they don't, what, what do we do if they don't?
Well, I think, I think if they don't, it's, it's, there's a, there's a code violation that they could be, where they could be hit with a penalty for obstructing roads, obstructing road with washouts and so forth.
All right, so I'd like the letter to send to include that, which is the orals. All right? And I want that to be the next step we take then.
Yes.
We gotta get this fixed. It's a safety hazard.
Yes.
And so we just can't let this linger. It's lingering, we've been at it for years. Bob, you can vouch for, it's been a long time. Okay, we gotta get it fixed.
Okay.
All right, good.
Yep.
Any questions about that?
Ian sent the draft right before the meeting.
Oh, is that right?
So I think it seems a little good. I think, well, there should be added that.
Yeah. The orals, whatever it is. I also want to be clear that the village is gonna pay none of the cost here, all right?
Yes.
We're demanding this be fixed, but the village is not gonna put any funding into this thing. We're already spending enough having the, keep the dipper guys go sweep it up or.
Yeah, I, I was in conference late in the afternoon. I didn't see Ian's draft.
Okay, fine.
So we'll, we'll be sure that it includes those things.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Okay, next is the budget. And so we're going to have a public hearing. See if we have to, should we describe it all or? I've sent out a newsletter to describe in detail what's in the budget. So I'd like to make a motion. We open the public hearing. Someone? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there, oh, there is somebody from the public hearing. Okay.
I'm the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your service, by the way.
I'm sorry?
Thank you so much for all your great work and service to the community, by the way.
All right. Thank you. Any comments regarding the, the budget?
No, I didn't have.
No, okay. Anybody else have a comment regarding the budget? Okay, now I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I want to make a proposal. We vote for the budget. Sir, anything, anything from out here I gotta go through here?
Uh, I don't believe so, because then you'll, you'll do the sewer rate resolution after. Let's.
So that's after the vote on the board from the budget or before?
Um, yeah, I should probably do it before.
Let's do it before.
Yeah.
So as part of the budget, we have necessitated a 10% increase in the sewer portion of the budget. We'll raise the cost of sewer service from $9,000 to $990. The effect overall on the water sewer bill is between, I think the numbers, worst case scenario, is between 3.9% and 4.9% decrease in the overall water sewer bill. That's just about 40%. And this is necessary in order for us to start accruing fines for the upcoming improvements to the wastewater treatment. I think we discussed that as a board and we'll all clear on that. So based on that, is there a resolution for the?
Yes.
Sewer increase, let's do that first. Okay, there's a resolution. Whereas at a really convenient meeting, the Village of Millbrook Board of Trustees, the board's reviewed and everybody announced the sewer rate as follows. Village and Town sewer rates will go from $9,000 to $990,000. Therefore, we resolve the above mentioned sewer rate increases will go in effect of the July 2024 water and sewer quality building. April 10th, 2024. Also moved, can I get a second?
I'll get a second.
Okay, can we do a roll call?
Mayor Hallykey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Doro?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Cantina?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2024 budget, 2024, 2025 budget. Sorry, halls in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed?
I'm opposed and I'd like to split my vote.
Okay, sure.
So as you can probably guess, I don't cast my vote against this budget lightly and that's why I want to explain it. I agree with most of what we do in this budget, our commitment to the tax cap, maintaining the general fund balance, continuing most old key services and providing a cost of living increase to employees are all essential to my support. But I am going to vote against this budget because I do not support paying for part-time police chief with deep cuts to other parts of the department's budget. So our goals are to bolster recruitment and retention of the best possible police force and to maintain the public safety of the residents of Millbrook. Indeed, toward this end, just this fall, we unanimously agreed to raise police, police pay for all officers and mandate increased shift coverage for all part-timers from four to six shifts per month. But now, under the new budget, we undermine these goals in three ways. First, the reduction in weekly patrol hours from 96 to 80 hours comes on the heels of the reduction last fall from 104 hours to 96 per week. That is roughly, if I'm not correct, 24% decrease in patrol hours each week with no indication that another agency, the sheriff's office, the state police, anyone will patrol our village instead. Secondly, the budget does make a significant attempt to increase pay for new hires to allow the village to compete with surrounding communities for the best officers. This increase comes on the heels of the increases we began in September. I strongly support both efforts. However, our officer's range of experience working in Millbrook is quite large, from 24 years to six months. Though our pay raises increase starting pay, they don't provide corresponding increases for more senior officers. This will make it less attractive to stay with our force. I fear that by discouraging career officers, we risk the less experienced force and that will compromise public safety. Finally, the budget will, the budget provides a 3% in cost of living increase to all but one employee that we expect to be employed by the Village of Millbrook team first. I fully support these raises, but believe that inflation affects all of our employees and that no one should be left out. I fully support these raises, but believe that inflation affects all of our employees, and that no one should be left out. So, to conclude, over the years, we have made a number of budget adjustments after budget passage to address unforeseen needs or inequities because our careful budget fiscal planning allowed us to cobble together the necessary funding to do so without raising additional taxes. Though I have urged my colleagues to address these issues before we pass this budget, this does not appear to be in the cards. I therefore ask that we consider doing so at the earliest opportunity in the coming months. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so we know, um, we have just passed the budget, though. Right?
Yes, you have.
All right, thank you.
I'll just commend you there for, uh, you know, very difficult budget process and, and gaining support across the ideological spectrum. And, uh, you know, making a lot of tough choices. Some of that was, uh, to hopefully improve the police department, so.
Okay.
I'm excited.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on, sidewalk dining, just a note that, um, we have requested last year that anyone who thinks, business who wants to provide sidewalk dining, gets a permit from the village, and those permits are still valid. Although what we are requesting is that they give us an updated insurance covering statement for this year. Now, are we gonna send out letters to them, can we do that?
Um, I can, I've been, I didn't really have a plan.
Yeah, can we do that, I'd like to do that, there's only five of them, I think, right?
Yeah.
All right, so if you do that, I think that would be official notification for them to apply that to us. Okay. Public comments, anyone from the public will make a comment.
Well, I'm good.
All right, board member updates. Trust, uh, Deputy Mayor Doro?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick ones, just on STRs, so we are pushing back the timeline there.
Yep.
Uh, I'm still working with, uh, Granicus to get that online. We're still waiting for, uh, this parcel level data file from the town assessor's office. Uh, so hopefully that will be forthcoming, and then I can kinda get going with Granicus. Until we get that file, uh, can't really move forward with that, so we're, we're waiting on that.
So you're waiting on the assessor to provide that list? Okay.
If we need to, um, there's people in the county that we can reach out to, Real Estate Property Services, or, uh, possibly another office or two that can get us this information, uh, albeit at a small fee perhaps.
Maybe worthwhile?
Like ninety bucks or a lot bucks, so not, not a lot.
Okay.
Um, I got a little more information on that today, uh, but we can discuss it.
Okay.
There's a speaker next, we'll see.
One, one thing is, and sir, maybe you can help me out, we have a form that we're gonna give to the, those who request a permit. Do we have a checklist that the inspector's gonna go through, do you know this?
Ken has.
I believe there is one.
There is one, okay, I'd like to see that. We'll make a note.
We talked about it briefly, you know, life safety.
Right.
Fire code.
Parking, um.
Et cetera.
Whatever the, the code requires, I wanna make sure that's on the checklist, that, you know.
I might, I might have what, uh, Justin is potentially gonna use, so I can.
I'd like to see that, okay.
Yeah, let me see if I can find it, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And I have one other comment as well, there's a town board meeting tomorrow night.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where hospitality is on the agenda. It's been a long, you know, several years now outstanding issue, um, with them. Um, some of you may recall that they formed a comprehensive plan review committee, uh, which took many months to outreach to town and village residents, came up with a report. Um, many, um, conclusions of that report have been, were, uh, coordination with the village on hospitality. Uh, besides that one, you know, inquiry we got, uh, which we offered some feedback on that one lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where we would not allow water and sewer hookup. Uh, to my knowledge, there's been absolutely no coordination with the village on hospitality.
I agree with that.
Uh, so they formed this, you know, the committee, they, they spent all this time and money, and they formed all these conclusions. And again, one of the major conclusions was coordination with us, and there's been zero coordination. Uh, so if village residents, um, you know, are concerned about anything like around hospitality, they should go tomorrow and, and speak their minds to, uh, to the town board and whoever is leading that on the board.
Does that mean tomorrow at five thirty or six?
I think they changed the time to probably prevent people from going, so I think it isn't five thirty.
I believe it's five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. That's not the typical start time for the village.
No, it's interesting.
Okay. Okay, Trustee Herzog?
Yeah, I have a few things, try to make it brief. Uh, besides the planting we talked about in Franklin Avenue, the shade tree committee has been discussing the fact that we do have money in our shade tree budget to be able to replace trees that were removed last year at, uh, one twenty-six maple, and one oh-eight maple, and sixty-two maple. Uh, and we'd like to be able to, uh, go out and, uh, use, uh, some local growers and providers to be able to replace those trees. We do have forty-eight dollar, forty-eight hundred dollars, as far as I know, in our current budget.
Still there, yeah.
Still there, and that's what I'd like to be able to use to get those trees planted. That's all the details I have now, other than the fact that, uh, I have received today a note from, uh, the people who we used last year at Adams, and it was not their formal, uh, their formal processes person who runs the tree lot behind Adams. And they have trees available that, uh, we'd probably be able to let us get at least, uh, four or not five trees for under three thousand dollars. So, you know, they can, we can do that. The only issue right now is to make sure that they plant them properly, 'cause when they did last year, I had some issues with the way the trees they did last year were planted. But in mind, there's something things to be fixed, so I would just like to, whether it's gonna take a motion or whatever, be able to just make a motion that the shade tree commission go out, pick the trees, and be able to do that.
I think that's part of your own job, I would think that would be a motion to that.
All right, just wanted to.
Um, I'm doing what you should check this spring, to see that all those trees that we planted last year came out this spring. Do they did, and we go back to Adams and say we want them replaced.
Yeah, and butted and already the.
Yeah, well, so you can do that, okay, good.
Absolutely, that's fine, okay. Uh, and just to be aware, we also have plans to advise, uh, removing a few trees. Uh, one at Maple, it still has to be removed, and one on Weatherford Lane that's due, and that'll get done hopefully, uh, in the month of April or May.
Well, we're gonna see from the budget, whether we can, I'd like you to send me an email with identifying which trees should be removed. And then I'll work with Bob to make sure from the budget, whether he can afford it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I expect us to have excess money, like, unused salt.
Yeah.
Okay. And so I wanna make sure we've verified that first before I give them the go ahead, if we're able to do that.
Yeah.
On this budget.
And that, and that's fine, 'cause it's not a time sensitive, except for the end of budget, because we're not replacing trees there this year. That will happen in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay, fine. So you're sending an email with, uh, specific line of tree locations?
Yes.
Are they removed?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, next, uh, climate smart communities, Genevieve Blasen is currently filing pledge element is completed by the village towards bronze certification, and is doing that ongoing for the next month and a half. The NRI project is completely done, we're currently working on a resolution to have the village board accept the graph maps and the, uh, the text. Uh, the town has already accepted both, uh, both vault NRI materials, and that's something I'd like to bring up at the main meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, third.
When, when do we see the maps?
Um, I hope to be able to get together, Genevieve can get ahold of them, 'cause she picked them up, and I haven't seen them since.
Are they gonna be online in a PDF format that we can share? Are they gonna be?
We have, we have basically the maps, which are tables.
Physical.
Physical maps, and I'd like to, you know, mount them onto some kind of cork board or something so that they're not just rolled up things that, you know.
Oh, they put them in a file somewhere that we can actually install them.
Yeah, and, and I think we can, we can do that.
Do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that for a few hundred dollars, it's not, it's not too.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be difficult.
All right, good.
Uh, third, we received notice that Central Hudson has a proposal to replace our sodium-based streetlights with LEDs. Uh, the cost of the project that the mayor and I have been working on was quoted last week at eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, the savings due to replace the current lights that are not LEDs would pay for themselves within three years. Uh, we need a meeting with Central Hudson representative Brian Finn to iron out details and potentially have a proposal. And again, we might wanna look at, may, based on funds that may be available at the end of the year.
Yeah, I just wanna understand those, what, what responsibilities we would take over? You said that they would be, they'd be maintained still by Central Hudson?
Right.
Even though they'd be ours, aren't books? I wanna understand how it works before we come back to the board.
Yeah, me too, but that's.
Your line is interesting, it's, it's within three years, that's good.
Yeah, that's, that's a great.
I understand if there's anything out there, any costs or?
Yeah, that's a great return on the investment, if we could invest just slightly under nine thousand dollars in LED lights and all of the Central Hudson lights. Um, and, and that would be on, the savings would kick in beyond the three years, 'cause once that's done, you know.
What, what are all of the Central Hudson lights specifically?
There's seventy-five, some of them.
All those big green pole things?
And, and Franklin and all, all the way up and?
All around the village?
Okay.
All on Church Street.
I just didn't know if some weren't considered ours and some were considered theirs.
All, all those big green pole ones are theirs.
Okay.
All right. And I think we own all the decorative lamps.
We own all of the ornamental lights, there's about thirty of them. And we own all of those. Some of those are LED, matter of fact, most of them are LED already. Uh, and, and are around, uh, around, uh, tree gardens and, and up and down Franklin Avenue. But, uh, I think we need a secondary proposal from Mike Schultz or someone, which I think would be very inexpensive to convert those last six to LED also at some point.
He'd be converting as he, as he goes, yeah.
Yeah, that type of thing, so that would be.
Right now, we pay for the electric for all those big pole lamps, and they own, they, they repair them. I don't understand what the conditions are with talking about this proposal.
Do they want us to pay for LED conversion for like telephone pole lighting?
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the thing is that, that basically.
See, because we pay for the electric.
Right.
You're in the time, of timeframe, you don't wanna pay off, pay, pay back for us.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we can basically.
Owners are gonna pay the costs or?
Yeah, we can pay ourselves back within three years, so it makes, it makes good, good sense to me.
In a long way.
But I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna, uh, speak incorrectly, we have to make sure we get this nailed down and right in.
Yeah, sure. Question?
Yeah, just, and I don't mind if you remember last year, I have last year caught up, uh, observations that, that at night, various lights are out, huh? Where I live on Buzzard Drive and also in Franklin, you know, walking back home at night, we noticed that, huh? And I don't know if you remember, but we, we talked briefly, and, and I don't know, since you folks are all talking about lighting right now, that's something that can be checked, where it has to be checked.
So you should, you should notify us if it, you told you about this, I don't know anything about this.
Yeah, I just need addresses, basically, but I mean, we'd have to have, uh, we'd have to have someone go out and check it at two, three in the morning to be able to.
Well, or nine o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And Bob can tell Central, if there's a light, like, the Russell Knowles light's been out, and Bob just tells Central Hudson.
Yeah, right.
And fix it, so. If that's true, we can tell Bob and he can come, call Central Hudson.
Yeah, we need four days for Central Hudson.
And they'll come and fix it.
Okay.
And if it's one of our, or now, then, uh, he, he calls Mike and.
Mike Schultz and he's out.
Okay, good. So you're gonna see addresses, what, what you're concerned about?
Yeah, it was here up on Buzzard Drive, huh? And I think, oh, even Franklin going up, but if I remember, it was end of last year we talked, you know?
Okay, all right. We get the wind from the pharmacies out, that's all I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, I guess it would make sense, it's, it's, someone to check maybe at ten PM or whatever.
I'll tell Bob to go, go do a check. That's probably what I'm doing with all this, right?
Yeah. And, uh, the last thing I have in my notes is the sidewalks. Uh, we're working on, we're working on revising plans for the north side of Franklin Avenue through, uh, ready, uh, engineering to make sure that we could then get a proposal together for a HUD application to the county for federal funds, uh, in the summer of twenty-four. Uh, that means that if we were awarded any monies, the actual phase three, four of the sidewalk project would be completed in two thousand twenty-five, so that's the last.
And that's for, for Patrick and I can work on.
Right.
Getting with the county, and talk about what's required for the CBPG, I can, and I'll follow up on that. Now, we've got the budget behind us, we can start looking at that.
Yeah.
All right, Mike, any else?
No, that's it.
Trustee Cantino, anything?
Uh, just put on the body armor, uh, great proposal we're pursuing. Um, the Department of Criminal Justice Services responded to the list of body armor that we want and told us that they are checking to make sure that what we're requesting is certified as a Department of Justice certification.
Good.
That it's safe, so we're waiting on that. On our parts, they want to be sure that our police policy procedures include a mandate that the officers actually wear the armor when they respond to an incident.
So to that end, we're gonna next book on those two chapters.
Yes, we have lots of policies, and sure enough, of course, they have that, so.
All right, good. Any else?
That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Just the sidewalk.
Okay, good. Any questions or comments? I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.